Okay.
It doesn't include Nora anymore, but I still step out because it just takes me to come over.
He just wanted you to come see us and knock me down his back.
It's just easier.
Take that for a sec.
Hey, this is for you now.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us on July, for our July 27th, 2022 meeting. We returned from executive session at 7:12, but we were having technical difficulties. But it should be all straightened out now, right, Mr. Shans? Okay, thank you. So I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:25. As a reminder, we are live streaming on our YouTube channel, and the recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards. I would also like to thank Mr. Mike Halen from the Rainham Channel for recording our meeting this evening. From executive session, we will be reporting on the following: A report of executive session, the school committee has responded to Ms. Hunt's complaint; a release of executive session minutes; and contract negotiations. Before we have those reports, I would like you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I would also like to take a moment and ask committee members to please speak clearly into the microphone when, and I'll take my own advice, when you are speaking and giving your reports to ensure our viewers from home can follow along. The first item from executive session, I will read the committee's response to Ms. Hunt's complaint, which was sent via certified mail on June 24th, 2022. On April 27th, 2022, Ms. Hunt, during the public comment portion of our meeting, made a complaint alleging Superintendent Swenson used text messages and email in an attempt to besmirch her reputation, bullying and harassing her into compliance because he found one or two questions of the candidate's forum to be intimidating and unanswerable. The school committee took this complaint very seriously and met on May 11th, 2022, May 25th, 2022, and June 15th, 2022, in executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to investigate this complaint. The school committee invited Ms. Hunt to our May 25th, 2022, meeting, but she declined. Although she declined, she did offer to respond to any questions in writing that the members of the school committee might have. After the May 25th meeting, the school committee forwarded to her a number of questions to which she responded on June 8th, 2022. When the school committee met in executive session on June 15th, it reviewed all the information before it. Her complaint and copies of emails and text messages dated April 27th, 2022; her June 8th response to the school committee's questions; and Mr. Swenson's responses to her complaint and his answers to the school committee's questions. It then deliberated whether there was evidence that Mr. Swenson attempted to besmirch her reputation and bullied and harassed her to withdraw two questions for the candidate's forum. He found it objectionable. The school committee concluded that the exchange between Superintendent Swenson and Ms. Hunt was a conversation between two adults who disagreed with each other. When people disagree with each other, even forcefully, it does not rise to bullying or intimidation. For these reasons, the school committee found that Mr. Swenson did not besmirch Ms. Hunt's professional reputation, bully, or harass her as alleged in Ms. Hunt's April 27th, 2022 complaint. Please be advised that this issue of whether the use of public resources by a public employee for political activity has been referred to the Massachusetts Ethics Commission. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the release of executive session minutes from the following dates. So I will make a motion to release the following executive session minutes as redacted for privacy reason per public records law. Those would be the March 27th, 2019; February 24th, 2021; March 24th, 2021; April 28th, 2021; July 28th, 2021; August 30th, 2021; February 16th, prior to the meeting of 2022. And that will do it.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Mr. Dolan.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Marrera. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Aye.
Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Aye.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli.
Abstain.
Mr. Marrera.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Six in favor, one abstention.
He wasn't here.
Okay, yeah, no problem. I know there has been a lot of interest in these minutes. So if anyone is interested in a more complete picture of the matter in these minutes, additional documentation is available upon a public request. We will also entertain a motion to approve the executive minutes for release, and these minutes were not redacted. March 13th, 2019; March 9th, 2020; October 28th, 2020; January 25th, 2021; January 27th, 2021; September 22nd, 2021; November 24th, 2021; December 15th, 2021; January 26th, 2022; February 16th, 2022, after the meeting; our executive session; and March 30th, 2022; and June 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mr. Marrera. This will be a roll call vote.
Madam Chair.
Oh, discussion?
Go ahead, Mr. Dolan.
It was just the second date you read, I believe you said March, it was September 9th?
Oh, I'm sorry, September 9th. I'm sorry.
And I'd just like to put some context to this because it's easy to just go through motions and hear things. But the reason some minutes are released unredacted and some minutes are released redacted is essentially to protect the school district itself from any liability that may attach to releasing private information, et cetera, et cetera. And all of these redactions are being made essentially on the advice of our attorney to protect the district from any liability down the road.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Anyone else? Okay, so this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Marrera.
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli.
Abstain.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Aye.
Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr., Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Six in favor, one abstention. Motion passes. Okay, next, we have contract negotiations with Mr. Dolan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce with us this evening Ms. Pat Riley from the Board of Selectmen in Rainham. As you are all aware, anytime we have a contract ratification with one of our bargaining units, we always have a member of one of the town's governing bodies to serve as the ninth member of our committee. So in the form of a motion, Madam Chair, I would like to move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the school committee and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal, AFSMI Employees Council 93, Local 1700, Maintenance Custodian Grounds, further known as the Union.
So moved.
Second.
I made the motion, you're the second.
You're second.
I made the second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may now, just some hot, quick highlights. The contract is from July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2025, so that is a three-year contract, and it is retroactive, obviously, to July 1st. And the big, the big piece, or I guess the highlight, the biggest highlight, is the wage schedule. We worked really hard with the Union, who I'd like to thank tonight, to get the wage scale really completely redone. So effective July 1st, the salary scale will have a market correction for all of its members. And we're doing that to make sure we're retaining and getting the best candidates. And then effective year two, it's a 2% increase, and effective year three, it is a 2% increase. Time over the first year is a 5.4% increase. Year two is a 3.4% increase, and year three is a 3.1% increase. And Ms. Macedo can speak to this if she would like, but we have budgeted for this for the first year, obviously, because that is as far as our budget goes. So our budget can handle this market correction and salary increase.
And I agree with that, but the percentage is the overall increases, and we do have sufficient on this budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
And this is through you to Mr. Dolan. Just a really simple question. When you hear a 2% increase, but it's an, it's an in effect, a little over a 3% increase in the budget, what happens is people move up steps so that, in fact, the whole schedule moves up 2%, but there are some employees who move up a step and have a little bit more than that 2%, so it averages out to that slightly over 3, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
There are 10 steps in each one of the groups. So the Maintenance Custodian Grounds, there are 10 steps for each one of those groups. And after step 10, the member maxes out.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, this will require a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Aye.
Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Aye.
Mrs. King.
Aye.
Mrs. Martelli.
Aye.
Mr. Marrera.
Aye.
Mrs. Riley.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And again, I'd like to thank the Union membership and Ms. Riley for being here this evening. This was, this was a contract. So I, again, want to thank everybody involved, including the negotiations teams. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Pat.
That's right.
Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence and recognition. And each month, I will continue to report on emails and correspondences from members of the school community. This month, the school committee received emails ranging in topics to include several emails from one community member regarding public participation; two emails, one of which addressed an IEP concern, and one of which was a personnel issue, which are not in the purview of the school committee, so were forwarded to Mr. Jovalos and Mr. Swenson; a follow-up to the school committee meeting on June 15th, 2022, wanting to engage in a two-way communication with school committee members; three emails regarding comments made about Bristol Plymouth; and a follow-up on youth marijuana. Next on the agenda, we have BREA nomination of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District Committee. At this time, I would like to thank the Bridgewater Rainham Education Association for nominating the 2021-2022 School Committee for the Plymouth County Education Association's Distinguished Service Award. This award is in appreciation for outstanding support and interest in public education. We are very appreciative and honored to have been selected to receive this award and hope it highlights the team efforts we put forth as a district. Next on the agenda, thank you. Next on the agenda is meetings and public participation. And since our last meeting, we have received an email regarding access to our meetings. As our meetings are held in public buildings that are ADA compliant, our meetings meet the statute of accessibility. However, if any person has a special requirement that falls under the American Disabilities Act, they may contact our Title IX Coordinator, Mr. Powers, and ask that a reasonable accommodation be made. Also, on July 16th, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito as acting governor, signed legislation extending key pandemic-era open-meeting law provisions, including remote meeting authorizations by committee members through March 31st of 2023. Remote participation means participation by a member of the public body, not members of the public. This allows the public body, the school committee, the ability to have its eight members participate remotely if a quorum is unable to be met in person. We remain in compliance with the extended remote-meeting extension as set forth by the executive order since we livestream our meetings in real time and the link is provided. As a reminder, our attorney did report out at our May 25th meeting that the open-meeting law does not require the public bodies allow public comment or public participation during meetings. To the contrary, the open-meeting law specifies that nobody shall address the public body without permission of the chair. Because the open-meeting law does not require that public bodies allow for public comment or public participation during meetings at all, the manner in which public bodies choose to accept comments or questions is outside the scope of the open-meeting law. Committee members, community members, I'm sorry, may email us, email the superintendent, or call central office with any questions or concerns that they may have. And this concludes the correspondence and recognition portion. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. And the school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open-meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption in the meeting, the committee will not engage with a speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. To reiterate, this is a time for the members of the public to voice comments and concerns regarding agenda items, and the committee is not able to respond in any way at this time. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Swenson directly following the meeting. The chair will now open the public comment period for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. When your three minutes is up and you still have not finished, I will ask that you submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will distribute it to the committee for our review. So at this time, I would like to open public comment at 7:43. If there is anyone that would like to address the committee, you may come up to the podium. Oh, and I'm sorry, Sophie. Sophie Senna did sign up for public comment.
Hi, I'm Sophia Senna, Alabon 320 Cherry Street. Good evening, Superintendent Swenson, Madam Chair, and members of the school committee. I wanted to share a student's perspective of the current setup of the middle school band and instrument sectionals or lessons. Although I have finished middle school and will be an incoming freshman, I want to express my frustration, not to just complain, but in hopes that it might spark a change for the future middle school musicians. For the past two years, I have been a member of NJHS or National Junior Honor Society. I have unilateral hearing loss, as well as epilepsy, and an auditory processing disorder. I tell you this so you can fully understand the effort, time, and dedication it takes for me to earn the grades to be in NJHS. And I know that I am not alone, as there are other students with challenges. I take advantage of every extra credit assignment and after-school help session. I am also a musician. I love band and I love trumpet. I'm a better and happier student because I am a musician. But the way the schedule is set up now, I'm often loaded with extra work, not enough time, and not enough instruction because I am a musician. And before I elaborate, I think everybody here knows my mother and everything that she tries to do for the music program. But I wanted to speak to you because we've had so many conversations about this problem, and in her words, "I do what I can. You can speak to you too, if you think it's important." I can't stress enough that these are my words and my friends' words, and these are the problems we face as middle schoolers on a day-to-day basis. I love my trumpet section. Everything good comes from there. My best friends are there, I meet new friends, and my skills have expanded. Although all this good comes from there, I have never had one lesson without one trumpet peer complaining about the fact that we have had a lesson or band. Not because they dislike music, but because they stress about missing other important lessons in ELA, math, or science, which I understand because I have complained about this matter. If it weren't for my brother, a junior in high school, I would not have known that band is an actual class. I probably would have given up my passion for music so I would struggle with my, so I wouldn't struggle with my other classes. I know what to expect in the following years, and I am very excited to get to high school. But the other middle school band kids don't know what is coming, and honestly, I am not sure how many of them are going to continue on the music path to high school. This is partly because of how the music program is set up in the middle school. Not only is it affecting the middle school, not only is it affecting the music we play, but our academic schooling as well. Every time we have a sectional, a time in which we practice with just our type of instrument, we miss a class, and every week, the class changes. And when we have band, we lose our ASB block. And again, it interferes with our schooling. And even if these obstacles did not bother us, we have to maintain a certain grade point average to even be in band. So how does it make sense that we have to miss classes we are required to do well on? While we are in band, teachers will give out extra work to do during ASB for other kids. Then, the extra work sometimes counts as quiz grades, and we have to do it at home with no instruction. Several times, I acted as a spokesperson for the other band kids, and will be emailing teachers at night with questions, and the other kids will be emailing me, emailing me, like, "Did Miss so-and-so answer yet?" All because we went to band. Middle school should be hard. It should be challenging. Even so, we should not have to give up what we love and enjoy. I'm not trying to cry, that's unfair, but I shouldn't have to miss notes on a chapter test and have to chase down someone else's notes because I play music. And yes, the teachers do give us extra time for missing assignments like weekends or school nights, but the teachers are not there, so what if we have a question? Half the time, we do not have all the information we missed, even though we have to make up every effort to get it. The way to fix the problem seems obvious to me, but I know it won't be easy. Band needs to be graded class on its own in a time for sectionals that doesn't make us miss other classes. And if the way things are set up now can't let that happen, then I ask you to think about changing the schedule so it does work. Music or band isn't just a fun club. It makes us better students, we use math skills, and we get to be creative. We work as a team, and it's like learning another language. Making band a class would allow more kids to join, making better students. It would help our music program grow into the high school. I would ask you seriously to consider making band and sectionals a real part of the middle school schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee during public comment? Seeing none, I will end public comment at 7:48. And I want to thank Sophia for coming tonight to express to us your views, your concerns that you may have. And if you didn't get a chance to speak or would like to speak, we do have a second public comment at the end of the meeting. Next on our agenda, we have the action items, the consent agenda. Including in the consent agenda this evening is the approval of minutes dated June 16th, 2022; approval of the general ledger warrants dated June 16th, 2022; June 23rd, 2022; June 30th, 2022; and July 14th, 2022. Additionally, we have the acceptance of gifts of $605 from Global Montello Group to RMS. So I will now entertain a motion to approve... Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, June 15th for the warrants? Okay.
Oh, for the minutes.
The minutes. Oh, for the minutes approved, okay. I'm sorry, for the minutes, June 15th. Thank you. And so I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mr. Marrera. Discussion?
Well, I did not see the minutes in the drive, actually.
Okay. They were separate, right, the minutes?
Oh, okay.
I would never question Judy's minutes.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain because I did not.
So we have seven in favor, one abstention. Motion passes. Okay.
Seven or six in favor?
Six. Sorry, Mr. Fitzgibbons, my math, first grade math is a problem tonight.
I was looking for Mr. Diamarino.
Yeah, he's not here this evening.
Thought he snuck in on us.
No. No.
Okay, next on the agenda is educational reports. And first, we have the report by...
Do you accept the gifts?
Yes, under the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Accelerated Academy, Mrs. Richards and Mrs. Joyce.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Swenson. Happy to be here to report out on our Summer Acceleration Academy, where, Mrs. Holbrook, we could work on those first-grade math skills. So we're now in our second week of the Elementary Academy, which is the one that I'm in charge of. Ms. Joyce will be talking about the Middle School Academy. We have 106 students enrolled in our academy. They are all entering grade one through entering grade five. We have a staff of 14. There's a site coordinator, 10 classroom teachers, two at each grade level, as well as two PE teachers and a unified arts teacher who's doing a combination of music and art activities. And I have to say, you know, it's always a lot of work putting this program together. But then you see the students coming in on the first day and how happy and excited they are, and how they're really having such a good time, that it makes it really all worth it. Some of the parents have already given the feedback that their kids love coming to Summer Academy, and the teachers are doing such an amazing job of making it fun for the students and not just, you know, a task of going to school. This summer, we're using Scholastic Spell Excel curriculum, a curriculum we purchased using some of our ESSR monies in order to just kind of make consistent what the students are working on and learning during these academies. I'm happy to answer any questions about the Elementary Academy.
Any questions from committee members?
And I'm also going to fill you in, just in case you're curious, about the high schools' summer school program for this year. So Ms. Laura O'Brien, who is the World Languages Department Head, is running the high school summer school program, and that is in its third week this week. We have 28 students who are working on credit recovery, making up for credits for courses that they need in order to graduate. And the teacher who is, the teacher who is teaching the credit recovery program has put together some nice thematic units for the students on things like, you know, social-emotional health and study skills and organization and community service so that the time that the students are spending making up for their lost credits is well-spent. They also are offering a remedial algebra and a remedial geometry class, as well as English Language Arts 9 and English Language Arts 10. And there are seven students participating in the math and seven students participating in the English courses.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee, Superintendent Swenson, and everybody here and at home. I'm going to share a little bit about the Middle School Summer Acceleration Academy. We have students in our... We have students in our program, rising grade six through rising grade nine. We had two main focal points that we wanted to capture during our program, and those are acceleration, focusing on moving kids forward in ELA and mathematics, as well as a focus on social-emotional learning and executive functioning. So I'll talk a little bit about how both of those are being met. We have 40 students enrolled in our program. We have two ELA teachers, two math teachers. We have a supervisor who coordinates our site, and then we have an onsite counselor. And so our students daily get coursework in ELA and mathematics. They have a morning meeting that has been created by our onsite counselor to provide some social-emotional support. And our onsite counselor is also doing push-in lessons on executive functioning, goal-setting, academic confidence building, as well as pulling out students to work with them around those areas as well. Luckily, iReady extended their offer of personalized instruction through grade eight. We had originally only had through grade five in the district, so students have access to iReady math and ELA during their stay with us in the summer program. Alex is our additional math support that we use, and we also have access to that during the summer. Students are also able to work on their summer reading and their summer math work to kind of get that perk of completing something that they were going to have to do at home during the program. So far, it's been going really well, and I think everybody has been having a great time.
Wonderful.
Anybody have any questions for me about the middle school summer acceleration academy?
Any questions from school committee members? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
It's probably more directed to Mr. Powers. This is all being funded by COVID relief money, and so at some point, it may go away, and we just have to prepare people for that and understand, you know, it's not always going to be there necessarily.
Correct, unless it's, you know, advocated for and closing the operation.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Richards and Mrs. Joyce. Wonderful report. Okay, next, we have Director of Student Services report, Mr. Jovelos and Mrs. Maderos.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. This evening, Ms. Maderos and I are going to present out first. Ms. Maderos is going to give you an update of our special education extended school year program, and I'm going to continue on and give you an overview of the continuum of supports that are available here in Bridgewater-Ranham, and, you know, do some description of the experience that a struggling student might go through, you know, as they move through the levels of support here in BR. But I'll turn it over to Ms. Maderos to start us off.
Good evening, members of school committee. Thank you for having us. I'm here to speak on our extended school year program. If you recall, earlier in the calendar year, I informed you of our extended school year dates. Our summer program is called Extended School Year. We refer to it as ESY. And it is for students with special needs who require support during the summer so that they may maintain the momentum that they've worked hard to attain during the school year. So this is different from the population that needs it for credit recovery or for enrichment and those types of things. We certainly do try to provide an enriching environment, but however, it is one of their entitlements, and some of our students with special needs do qualify for it. The program is being held currently. We are in our third week of the five weeks, and RMS is the host. RMS has been a generous host to us since the summer of 2015, when we had to relocate the schools. So it's worked out really well. Since preschool is here, we have little furniture, we have big furniture, therefore, we can provide supports for everyone. Can't say enough good things about Mrs. Charlene Charette, Mr. McKnight, who have been very welcoming to us. In addition, I want to give a nice shout-out to our custodial staff, who get disrupted every summer with their plans because we come in and pretty much take over a good portion of the school. They have to reroute all their plans, but they are the most gracious, always supportive, always willing to move anything for us, and can't thank them enough. So to let you know a little bit more about our program, we have approximately 280 students that are invited for this summer program. We start the planning in early February, and it is actually the same as opening up a small school every year for five weeks. And it involves a lot of different components, so we invited 280 that were referred by their special education liaisons. Of those 280 students, by last count, 185 responded and committed to joining our programming for the summer. The attendance has been generally consistent since before COVID and when we did have full in-person, so it's been generally fluctuating around those numbers. We hired 81 staff members for ESY 2022 summer programming, which again is in a realm, give or take a few, consistent with previous years. This does not include the staffing provided through Horizon's consulting groups, such as BCBA's, ADA Techs. And the staff, 81 plus the other consulting staff, is used to staff a total of 23 classrooms. We are also fully staffed each day with a school nurse. We have been very fortunate to have our own school nurses every single summer that I've worked at. So a big shout-out to our coordinating head nurse, Mrs. Claire Brennan. She's done a great job recruiting, and, you know, we piecemeal it, but we're very confident to have the support of the nurses that already know the care and needs of our students. So a big thank you to them. We provide a wide variety of ESY programming to meet the needs of our students who qualify. Our ESY programming includes two-day-per-week academic reinforcement for reading, writing, and math. That would be the focus. Three-day programming is also provided for more comprehensive needs that include not only the academic reinforcement, but also reinforcement in other areas of development. And lastly, we also have a four-day program for students with our highest level of need, and that includes not only all the other areas of development, but also activities of daily living. And for some of our older students, that includes vocational opportunities and experiences, outings to the community, and practice with those types of everyday life. Depending on the student's individual program needs, a wide variety of services are available during ESY. That also include OTPT, speech and language, counseling, behavior intervention plans. Everything that these students are provided during the school year are provided, but at a smaller day scale in the summer, to continue that momentum that these students have worked so hard to attain. These are our best, and they are phenomenal. And it's such a treat every summer to get to see them, because as much as I try to keep them from growing so darn fast, they do it to me every year. So it's always great. It's like a little reunion. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just, I was doing the math in my head here really quickly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've got 23 classrooms and 185 students, so that's roughly eight students per classroom, if I did the math right in my head. 81 staff, which works out to just over two students per staff member. So I think it just shows what a great commitment the district is making to the needs of those students that need that help. So thank you very much for doing that.
That's very nice of you. We really appreciate it. It is a big undertaking every year, but it is a work of love. We do love the kids, and there's nothing we wouldn't do for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions from committee members? Okay, no. So thank you very much, Mrs. Maderos, and what a wonderful program, and the children are certainly very fortunate to have such a great group of staff members working with them. So thank you.
You're welcome to stop by, Tuesday through Friday.
Tuesday through Friday.
A variety of different programming, anytime between 8:00 and 12:30.
Okay.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Maderos. The amount of work that goes into coordinating this summer program is just huge, and she's exactly right. We serve our most needy students, who are all in the same building, but by default, are most endearing students, and being able to, you know, be a part of that program is just amazing. You know, I love walking through each day, so thank you very much to her for all her hard work. So in describing the continuum of supports that we have here in Bridgewater-Ranham, I could certainly be up here for hours on end describing the programming and the evaluation and referral processes, but I'm going to try to give you an overview more from the perspective of a struggling student. The whole process starts out with a student who's lagging behind in a particular skill or a particular content area, and our team members being responsive to that struggle that that particular student has. There are a number of pre-referral supports that are in place, where each building has building-based support teams, or child study teams, or common planning time, where teams can engage in conversations about students and discussions about how they can best support an individual student's need. Any student in our district is entitled to receive accommodations in the classroom or diversified instruction in the classroom. We have a district curriculum accommodation plan, which outlines strategies for teachers at all the grade levels, and gives them a guide for how they can individualize and personalize the experience of any student in their classroom through the implementation of accommodations. There are a number of just building-based supports that are available to any students. That can be as simple as a teacher in a classroom taking the time to pull a student aside and provide individual instruction in a particular skill. Can be as simple as a student meeting with a clinician in a building to work on a particular social, behavioral, or emotional need that that student has. It could be through our Title I teachers or our English Language Learner teachers. There are a multitude of different ways that students can have their individual needs met. If there's the suspicion of a disability for a particular student, and it's suspected that a student's, you know, profile may include a particular area of disability, that kicks in a special responsibility that we have called Child Find. And at that point, if a parent, any caregiver, including a teacher staff or administrator in the building feels as though there may be a disability that's impacting a student's performance, they may refer them for either a 504 or a special education evaluation. Now, a 504 and special education each carry with it a particular eligibility process and a particular entitlement that we're obligated to provide a student found eligible for a 504 or for an IEP with certain services or certain accommodations, unlike the DCA, which is not an entitlement, but just something that we are required to have in place as best practice to meet the individual needs of our students. So once a student is referred for evaluation, whether it be for a 504 or for an IEP, we engage in either file review, consideration of parent or outside caregiver input, or specific-focused areas of evaluation, which might be cognitive achievement testing for our vision-impaired students. We might have a vision specialist come out to, you know, to complete an evaluation with a student, occupational therapy, physical therapy, any area that might be the result of a child's disability, we'd be obligated to complete an evaluation in, and then, again, go through that eligibility process to determine if a student is eligible for those supports. For a 504 plan, a student would, again, receive accommodations, but a 504 plan can also include a service like counseling, like speech and language as well. If a student is found eligible for special education services, there's also a continuum within the realm of special education for tiers of what we call educational placements that students may participate in, which, as you get more intensive in terms of the student need, the level of support and the level of placement gets more intensive as well. A downside of that level of intensive placement is that the student spends less time with the intensity of placement outside of the mainstream setting. So here in BR, we're lucky to be in a very inclusive community. Even our students take great pride in supporting our students with disabilities and including students with disabilities, you know, across the district. And I've seen, you know, some really wonderful interactions with some of our most severe need students, with some of our mainstream PR students, and how, you know, welcome and loved they are in our school community. So we're very lucky to just have that be a part of the fabric of our school community. And going through that continuum of services, we start off with full inclusion programming, which is where students receive more than 80% of their time within a mainstream setting and might receive their services through a co-taught model or maybe pulled out from the classroom in an amount of time that is less than 80% of their school day. Moving on in terms of the intensity of programming, some students have what's called a partial inclusion model, where they're in the mainstream setting for more than 60% of their school day. So they may be pulled out, you know, for a 45-minute period each day to focus on reading skills or math skills. They may be, you know, spend one of their classes. For example, maybe at the high school, they have every day of Learning Center, and, you know, and so it's a more consistent period of time that they're not in that mainstream setting, receiving their services and supports. The most intensive level of support that we provide here in our district is called substantially separate programming, and we have certain strands of substantially separate programming that exist in our district that are focused on meeting the individual needs of certain profiles of students. And those strands of programming include, on the Ranham side of the district, a strand that supports our students who have social or emotional disabilities, and provides a therapeutic milieu for those students to be successful. Also, on our Ranham side of the district, we have a strand of language-based programming for students who have average cognition but just require more support in verbal skills. So reading, writing, communication continue to be areas of significant need for those students. On our Bridgewater side of the program, we have programming for students who have intellectual disabilities or autism spectrum disorders. And then, we're also very lucky here in Bridgewater-Ranham to have our own, what is essentially an out-of-district program, which is called a public day program, in our therapeutic day middle school and high school classroom, which supports students even above what that substantially separate program model does that's housed in our actual school buildings. We'll note as well, we have a wonderful preschool program, which has both inclusive classrooms and small-group substantially separate classrooms. And we also have a wonderful postgraduate program for our students with the most intensive needs, who need extra vocational or activities of daily living support between the ages of 18 to 22, prior to transitioning to adulthood. We also have some students who unfortunately and sadly we're not able to meet the needs of within our in-district programming. So we do work with a number of out-of-district schools, which again, have a hierarchy of intensity and based upon, you know, student need. As I mentioned, we have our own public day program in district, but we also work with several other public day programs in the area, including our member collaboratives, Reed's and Northover Collaborative, but also collaboratives such as South Shore Educational Collaborative, South Coast Educational Collaborative, and Pilgrim Area Collaborative that we work very closely with. Currently, we have 20 students who are in collaborative programs or public day programs that we work with. The next tier in that hierarchy are private day programs. So those are programs that have a more intensive level of support and service, sometimes year-round calendars as opposed to academic year calendars, and we currently have 11 students in those private day placements. The next level of support would be a student who requires a residential program. So to meet their needs and to provide for generalization of skills, those students spend the entirety of their day, morning and night, in a residential-based program, and we currently have seven students in residential programs. So our total at this point in time is that we have 38 students who attend programs outside of our district. And to give you an idea of the historical trend there, back in FY '16, we had 65 students here from Bridgewater-Ranham who attended programs outside the district. So you can see that over the past, you know, six years, we've made a significant difference in our ability to keep our students in their home schools and in their home communities where they deserve to be educated. And that historical trend speaks to your support for our in-district programming and the continued investment in building our in-district programming so that we can, you know, have our students be, you know, be educated in their home communities. Additionally, the cost savings associated with having students attend in-district programs as opposed to out-of-district programs is significant and, you know, is, you know, another justifying factor there, and makes me very appreciative to be in a district that, you know, has such a broad spectrum of programming and such support for that through, obviously, our school committee and, you know, Superintendent Swenson and Assistant Superintendent Powers. If there are any questions that you have about all this information that I shared, and I tried my best to condense, I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Mr. Marrera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amazing stuff. There's a lot to take in. I do have a question. We do a very good job from preschool all the way till high school. Do we have anything, things in place that help? Do we have anything, things in place that help our students transition out of high school, once they're getting ready to leave our program? Do we have programs in place, transitional pieces, or other programs that we may transition them to once they leave high school?
Absolutely. Great question. So for each of our students when they turn 14, we're required to introduce a new section of the IEP called the Transition Planning Form. So from age 14, we start that conversation at the student's team meeting, IEP team meeting, about what their postgraduate experience is going to look like. Once they get within two years of their actual graduation date, we're also able to introduce adult service agencies, state agencies such as Mass Rehab Commission, the Department of Developmental Services, or the Department of Mental Health, and we can make actual referrals to these adult service agencies that can do things with students even before they graduate and then after they graduate as far as job coaching, vocational coaching for some of our more severe need students. They can move on to day programs or residential programs after they leave our roles. So we help facilitate that transition and have those conversations with students about what preparation they're going to need for postgraduate life, starting at age 14.
That's great. I just want to make sure we have something in place because I feel like we offer such an abundance amount of services at our level that I would feel like if we let them leave our level, it'd be almost impacting them in a reverse manner. So I'm glad to hear that we have some things in place to help them succeed after they leave us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Oh, Miss Conrad Laberinto.
Okay, I'll head Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Okay. No, this is just a clarifying question from Mr. Jovalos, because I know what you said, but I sometimes worry about what people took it for you to mean. When you were talking about different programs on the Rainham side, on the Bridgewater side, it really is a district program so that children from Bridgewater can go to that Rainham side, children from Rainham can go to the Bridgewater side, and it's not, it's just where the program is housed, not who's getting the services, right?
Thank you very much for making that up. I actually meant to make that point, but I guess I missed it in my nervousness. Yes, we do have what are called district-wide programs, so any school district or most school districts that have multiple schools at a particular grade level, it's due to the level of student need. You might not have the number of students you need to justify, say, a program to support students in social, emotional need in two locations in your school district. Also, it becomes not cost-effective to have multiple programs that are the same program at different sites, so we create what are called district-wide programs where any student from Bridgewater or Rainham may leave their home school to attend a district-wide program in another school that houses the same grade levels. So thank you very much, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mrs. Conrad Laberinto?
You know, I have questions. Mr. Jovalos, thank you for presenting. I just have a question, or a couple of questions. On the de-cap plan, when's the last time it's been updated? Because I know there's been questions about that and it being a little bit out of date and people unable to actually find the plan.
Yes. Actually, in the website transition, it is something that I need to update and make sure is there through the recent transition that we had with the website. Additionally, it was last updated, I believe, before my time here in Bridgewater-Rainham, so it is naturally a document that does need revisiting, and I'm excited to say that a group of six team members, myself and Mr. Powers included, from BR are going to be going to a professional development at North River Collaborative for two days this summer focused on updating our district curriculum accommodation plan, and we hope to then roll that out over the course of the coming school year.
Great. And I just want to say too, I know you talked a lot about the supports the district has to support kids or youth on IEP and 504s, and I did just want to comment, the district also has, or it's private, but districts are required to have, is Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which is out there to support parents and educate parents on rights and the community around special education and 504. Yeah, okay. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Jovalos. And what a very impressive, broad-spectrum programming that is available to our students in Bridgewater and Rainham. And that, just like Mrs. Maderos has a huge undertaking, that is also a huge undertaking, making sure that all those programs are running and staffed well. So I do thank you for that.
Well, thank you all for your support.
Oh, sorry, I just remembered my last question. I know pre-COVID and I believe during COVID, part of if students had some behavioral health needs is High Point was coming into the schools and providing some additional kind of behavioral health supports through the child's insurance. Is that still happening? Are they coming in school or is it tele?
Still High Point.
I know it's High Point and they're still coming in, but are they actually physically at the schools or is it done all through a telehealth platform, virtual platform?
As far as I know, still in person, yeah.
It's still in person? Okay, great. And that's at all the schools, both across Bridgewater and Rainham?
Not all the schools. Primarily focused on elementary and middle school level.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Director of Wellness Report, Mr. O'Connell, and I will entertain a motion to continue the report by Mr. O'Connell until our August 24, 2022 school committee meeting.
So moved. Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Marrera and second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And next on the agenda is the Annual Health and Wellness Update by Mrs. Grenon, and I once again will entertain a motion to continue the report by Mrs. Grenon until our August 24, 2022 school committee meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, second by Mr. Marrera. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Administrative and School Committee Reports, and first we have the report of Superintendent Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. This evening, I'll give you a couple of quick updates, first starting with the Mitchell Elementary School project. It is becoming very real, but very exciting as well. The project is currently on schedule with only one lost time incident. Finishes continue with the final painting, flooring, casework and tile. Acoustic ceiling grids and tile installation is ongoing. Plumbing fixtures and lighting fixtures are being installed. Site work continues with curbing, sidewalks, fencing, and guardrails installation work for the playgrounds, which are very exciting to see as you go through the different areas of the site. There are several different playground areas for the different age groups. Furniture installation actually began last week. The second floor right now is pretty much complete at this point, so again, getting real, but very exciting as well. In terms of milestones, we did receive permanent power, which we talked about at the last school committee meeting through National Grid, so the startup and testing of our mechanical systems are on the way, and substantial completion right now is still scheduled for August 15, 2022. One slight concern I want to bring to the committee's attention and that of the community is that the gym flooring, the company that we are going through, through the gym flooring, was supposed to create and make the gym flooring and send it out as of this Monday, July 25. There has been a slight delay. As you can imagine, with post-COVID, a lot of vendors are behind on orders and deliveries. So right now, we're hoping to receive that product within the week or two. This is probably going to put behind the installation of the gymnasium by a few weeks, but obviously that would not be anything that would prevent the opening of the school. An exciting piece is that we were able to work with the vendor who is handling our school moves, Sterling Moving Company, and they have had a cancellation and they're able to actually come in tomorrow and begin moving our third-grade materials that are currently staged and stored at 166 Mount Prospect, and they will be brought over to 200 South Street, the Williams Intermediate School. At that point, hopefully, if there's time within the day, they will then pick up the sixth grade and seventh grade materials at the Williams and the eighth grade materials that are currently staged at the high school and bring those over to 166 Mount Prospect Street, which will be, again, Bridgewater Middle School in grades six through eight. So that will help us kind of expedite that moving process the week of the 22nd and possibly could be a cost savings as well. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Marrera?
Mr. Swenson?
Yes.
Obviously, post-COVID understanding on supply chain issues is definitely understandable because it's been felt everywhere in every industry across the entire country and across the world. Do we have a plan in place for when the gym floor is put in at the Mitchell School that won't disrupt normal operations of the newly opened Mitchell, just so we have a seamless opening, seamless first week or two, and then in the background, this gym is happening?
Right. Great question. So it is about a four-week process for the installation and the painting, and then finally the finish, and it takes about a week for that finish to settle. So depending upon how close we get into the month of September, it could, again, the product could be delivered next week and we might still be on that timeline. If we do have to creep into the month of September, it most likely will be done after school hours. That's probably most likely what we will try to push for, only because we don't want interruption to the school day. There are classrooms that are in proximity, the cafeteria is next door as well. All of the vendors and all of the install and everybody are going to be quarried, so we'll make sure of that for the safety of our students and staff. However, more from an academic disruption standpoint, we may try to push to have that done kind of in the after hours.
Is this gymnasium floor, is it stained and varnished?
Yes, it's hardwood.
Hardwood. Is there, do you know if the vendor has a plan in place to prevent the smells and the fumes, even though it's done after hours?
Must have been in my head yesterday when we were at the trailer meeting because I asked the very same question.
It's funny because I am a safety officer. I think of these things.
The only reason why is because we have, in the building that we're currently in at 166 Mount Prospect, they finish the floor every year, and it is rather pungent at times, especially with the warm weather. A question I did ask was, did we necessarily need to finish it? Could we kind of leave it unfinished and then possibly do that like over the winter break? They said we could, however, we'd be taking into, kind of taking somewhat of a risk with the paint being chipped or some scuffing of the floor. So again, they said the product, and this is coming from John Pataki, who works for RDA, the architect, it's a little, the materials that they use now for the finishing are a little less chemically based, so it's going to be a little less pungent, but you're still going to have that order of a finished floor. But that was a concern of mine, especially considering the proximity to the cafeteria. So right now, we're going to have to kind of wait and see, and hopefully the product does come in and we can kind of expedite it a little bit, and even if it means kind of doing an overtime situation to kind of at least get it put in place and then have to deal with the painting and the finishing, but that's a great question.
Yeah, I would just ask, you know, once the time comes, if it does happen while school's already open, that you push them to use proper exhaust fans and fans to move the air and do what they can just to keep the smell out of the hallways?
Absolutely. In fact, the company that makes the flooring is actually the company that installs, so I'm sure that they have that procedure in place, but that is something that both Mr. Dolan and I brought up yesterday at our weekly trailer meetings with our OPM, our designer and architect, construction.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I'd just like to follow on to Mr. Marrera's comment. We need to make sure the air quality is pretty much perfect there to open the building, and we don't want to have anyone having a bad experience that first week or so with, whether it be students, faculty, staff, et cetera, with any air issues, so that's important to me. But what I hear you saying is, we're going to be open on the 7th as of tonight.
Yes.
I know you can't promise tomorrow, but as of tonight, we're going to be open on the 7th, but we won't have a gym, is the likely expectation to set with folks?
Correct.
Right? Okay, that's fine. But what I did not hear in your report, but I'm sure you'll confirm, is we're still under budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's very exciting, we have this beautiful, brand-new school. My question is, and you all may talk about it in the subcommittee for the school building, is when will be like an open house for the community and folks to come in and see the beautiful, brand-new building that people have worked very hard on over the past years?
Sure. So I know that we have a few dates scheduled right now. We did talk about possibly, you know, looking at those dates and possibly revising those dates based upon, you know, not a full completion of the site with the gym. I think the gymnasium is going to be an outstanding space for both communities to be able to utilize, and I know a lot of folks probably from our communities may want to come into the site. It may not actually have students who attend, but may have students in the district who might utilize those sites for recreational-type activities, so I think we would want to give them kind of a complete thorough picture of the completed, you know, project. So I know I did mention that, you know, yesterday to Mr. Dolan, and we have a ribbon cutting and then we actually have a citizens tour also planned in September, so we may want to wait on those, but I'll leave that up to the powers-to-be for the school building committee to kind of make that. I think we're meeting on August 8th, so it might be kind of an agenda topic that we talked to Alyssa from CHA to add, you know, in terms of matters of discussion, because again, we want to make sure that everyone gets the full picture of the completed project.
And we did discuss a public tour on the 27th of August, but because that is potentially very close and tight for moves and that is a fluid date, but the ribbon cutting right now is still September 10th. We don't plan on that changing. The ribbon cutting is an invitation-only event, and then obviously the public tours would be open to the public. The ribbon cutting is an invitation-only event because at that point, the building will obviously be used as a school, and there will be students' names all over lockers, and we want to be mindful of protecting our students from folks that may want something they shouldn't do.
One thing that Mr. Powers and I did discuss yesterday is that Mr. Bray, the building principal, did plan on having parents of the students come in to visit the site. That's something that we will most likely move forward with even without the completion of the gymnasium floor, only because we want, obviously, the parents to see it have a kind of comfortable and familiar with the site. So that's the only kind of maybe portion of the population that may be able to get in there, you know, prior to the completion of the gym flooring.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, through you to Mr. Dolan, and I know you're on the committee as well, so I just want to ensure and everybody hears, because I know it's going to happen, that the Mitchell family will be at the ribbon cutting ceremony, so.
They will be at the.
That's part of the invitation.
They are on the list, and we've actually had several conversations with Mrs. Mitchell and actually needed to get a picture of Mr. Mitchell that will be on the plaque from her, so yes, the family is on our list and excited to be attending.
Thank you.
Okay, just a quick technology update, and I'm very excited to bring this to your attention as well. The district has recently talked about a one-to-one initiative for Chromebooks for students in grades five through 12, and through the due diligence of Mr. Shantz, our IT manager, and our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Powers, and Director of Student Services, Mr. Jovalos, through their grant writing, and being able to bring in all of these new devices to the district, you know, throughout COVID and hybrid learning, we now have enough. have enough Chromebooks to have a one-to-one for grades five through 12, and then we actually have additional Chromebook carts, which will be able to kind of push down to the pre-K4 groups and have one Chromebook cart for every two classrooms. And in speaking with Mr. Schontz as well, having enough Chromebook devices for substantially separate programs that Mr. Jovalos talked about earlier this evening. So with that, we are looking and planning for the distribution of the Chromebooks the week of August 22nd, and communication for parent pickup will be coming in the next few weeks. But what I plan on doing this Friday is sending out a traditional blast. I know we're going to go back to the BRSD buzz, you know, eventually, but this Friday is going to be an old-school BRSD update.
We're done with that.
Just to get us through the summer. And then what we're going to do is, what I will send out is all the information regarding the one-to-one initiative. I want to thank Mr. Schontz for drafting, and it's a very detailed outline of what the one-to-one is all about, and it even talks about, you know, some of, this is, and again, this is no cost to parents in terms of having to purchase a Chromebook, but it will be some information about should a Chromebook be lost or damaged, just like a textbook would be in a traditional classroom setting. So also, Mr. Schontz did a great job of putting together some frequently asked questions from other communities that have gone to one-to-one, so I will include that in as well. And not all families or students have to participate in the one-to-one. There is an opt-out to this program, so there will be the opt-out information sent out to parents again, and that will all come out again this Friday. We'll stop promoting that because we really, truly want to be able to hit the ground running the week of that 22nd to get these Chromebooks in the hands of the students in grades five through 12. Mr. Schontz, myself, and Mr. Powers sat down a few weeks ago, kind of mapped out how that rollout and distribution would go. So we do have a plan in place for that as well. So that information will be coming out Friday. I just want to thank the committee as well for all your support in, you know, throughout our hybrid and COVID years of allowing us to have some monies within our operational budget to replace some of these Chromebook devices as well. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to...
I have one question, Mr. Swenson. Those that choose to opt out, will they still have access to the same resources within the district Chromebooks that they would have using their own Chromebook?
Yes, so they can still access all of our digital curriculum resources. The rest, there is information in here, Mr. Marrera, that talks about, you know, really kind of staying away from tablets and phones and those type of devices, and to really focus on if you want to bring in a personal device, going more of the Chromebook or laptop route, because some of the compatibility issues are going to be found with more of your tablets that are maybe a little bit older and outdated and the cellphones.
And my other question was, those that choose to opt out and use their own, we'll just say a Chromebook, so it's the same, you know, brand as what the district is using, if they are new to the Chromebook world, and it's maybe a birthday gift or preschool gift, and they're having a hard time accessing how to get into the Google Classroom, will IT availability be there to maybe adjust a setting on their device so they can get into that?
I'm sure we can accommodate, you know, those students that have...
I'm not saying to clean the hard drive or anything, but just to kind of make sure they're able to get in to, you know, to make sure the right settings are set up on their personal device so they have access.
Sure. I'm sure one of our technicians would be happy to assist those students.
Perfect. Thank you.
Superintendent Swenson, I know from the materials that were shared with us, it looks like kids, students will have to take the Chromebooks back and forth to school every day.
Yes.
I know from having a kid in middle school, not high school actually, but middle school, those backpacks are full to the brim already. Are there going to be less books that they're going to be required because they're going to be digital now? Like, there's no room anymore right now already.
I mean, soon, you're probably going to see more of a transition to more digital pathways with our curriculum resources. Right now, the social studies curriculum at the middle school is digital. So right now, I mean, we still have some traditional textbooks. I think, so you're still going to have that kind of hybrid of old-school textbook and digital pathway through, you know, that you can access through your devices. So I hear you with the backpack piece. One thing I would, though, encourage parents to do is to, you know, get some type of protective device for the Chromebooks, and I know that we have spoken, Mr. Schontz and I, and talked about, maybe talked to some of our PTO leaders in our different buildings, and maybe having that as a kind of a fundraiser with, you know, the school logo on it, maybe a little section where you can put your ID, student ID in and the rest. So, but to your point, Mrs. LaBrento, we're still probably going to have the traditional textbooks to have to navigate along with our Chromebooks until we start to really kind of transition into, you know, digital pathway curriculum resources.
Will there be any opportunity at the middle schools, like, right, kids have lockers, but they're not locked. Is there any opportunity to leave the Chromebooks at school at night if they don't need them the next day?
I mean, that's something that we would have to talk with our principals, you know, about. I know we have our admin retreat, which I'm going to quickly, you know, talk about, so that's maybe something that we could talk to them about. They would probably need a charge, so I'm wondering if you're asking like a docking-type station-type situation or...
Well, yeah, I don't think...
Yeah, so that's something that we would have to figure out, because a lot of the Chromebook carts, again, are kind of getting pushed down to the younger grades to give them kind of the equitable access that the new Mitchell School is providing our students.
Madam Chair, I would assume that if we're giving five-through-12 Chromebooks, that there would be homework expected to be done on those every night, just as, so you're replacing, to your point, your social studies textbook now with a Chromebook instead of a textbook.
Right.
So as much as I appreciate the concern, I think we have almost a one, a flip, a trade-off between social studies and a textbook and the Chromebook. And then again, I would hope that our teachers are going to utilize those Chromebooks as they have been since COVID.
Right. And, you know, a few years back, pre-COVID, we talked about going to one-to-one, and we actually put a survey out, we were going to start at the high school, and we put a survey out, and one of the biggest concerns was professional development for the youth. Now, you know, trial by fire with COVID, you know, our teachers were trained in Google Classroom, a lot of them have become a lot more, you know, the devices are a lot more user-friendly and the access to the digital curriculums, you know, they've been, kind of, their hands kind of been forced a little bit in that area. So I think this is going to be a good thing. This is really going to be a good thing, and I think really traditionally, eventually I would say, we're going to get away from the traditional textbook piece, and I could see a lot of the textbook companies becoming app-based. And, you know, we're going to have to continue to cycle out these books, so that's going to be a budgetary situation, which we've already worked with Kathy Macedo about, and Mr. Schontz, and trying to put monies away into tech stabilization, which we'll talk about, I think, a little bit later on, and also kind of looking at that tech line almost like a utility that we look at when we're budgeting every year, and that's kind of a non-negotiable, because any interruption in one year's budget of that cycle is going to interrupt the entire one-to-one process. So, you know, we've had options to go more of a subscription route. We have so many devices now, we're going to have to kind of go the purchase route. So, but we're very excited about it, and I think, you know, our students and staff are going to be very excited about it, you know, especially as our curriculum resources evolve.
And I would also like to thank Mr. Schontz for putting together such comprehensive information for the families as well, so thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Michael, for that.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just one more point on the technology, and this is really just a request to the superintendent and through him to his administrative team. I get, you know, reading on a Chromebook and reading from a book, but can we just make sure we study the literature around how students process information, reading from a book versus reading off of a screen, because I believe there's studies out there that show it's processed and learned very differently, so we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing by the students. I'm not saying one is right or wrong, but I'd love to hear back at some point.
We have some collected data on the type of situations. We'd be happy to report that.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, one, two more quick ones. We have our admin retreat scheduled. This is our annual retreat with our entire administrative team. Very rarely do we get together as an entire administrative team with our central admin and our site-based administrators, including our assistant principals. So we're very excited. I just want to thank Mr. Powers, who does an outstanding job each year in working with folks like Mrs. Richards and Mrs. Joyce and Mr. Jovalos, and putting together a really robust schedule for our administrative team. So quickly, just starting on Monday, August 1st, we're going to have our Crisis Prevention Institution Training, or CPI training, and this is the Crisis Prevention Institute is an international training organization that specializes in research-based and safe management for strategies for dysregulated students to keep them safe, as well as their classmates and the staff safe. And on Tuesday, the staff is going to have not a CPI, but a CPR training, and that's going to be at the Connet Center. So we thank our nurse leader, Mrs. Grenon, for working with the folks over at the Connet Center. We're very appreciative of the partnership that we have with the Connet Center and thank them for that. On Wednesday, August 3rd, we're going to have legal updates with one of our legal councils, Mary Ellen Sawada. She's going to come in. We're going to focus on some of our disciplinary policies and some of the updates that are going to be implemented in the upcoming school year. And then in the afternoon, we're going to be looking at our district initiatives, probably most likely looking at our current student success plan and really trying to drill down what we'll be focusing on for the upcoming school year. As you know, we will be developing a new student success plan over the next school year, and we'll start to, later in the week, on Thursday and Friday, probably be looking at, you know, what direction we're going in terms of those district initiatives for the student success plan, in terms of the pillars and the action plans we have for those. On Thursday, August 4th, Dr. Peter Durkin is going to be coming in. Dr. Durkin has been working with central office administrators and has really helped provide guidance and direction in terms of our superintendent walks and educational rounds that we conducted every Tuesday throughout the school year in 2021, 2022. Dr. Durkin is coming in to assist the administrative team in the assessment, revision, and extension of our educational round practices. And I want to thank Mrs. Richards, because she's already generated the upcoming educational round schedule for the 2022, 2023 academic year, and this year, we're actually going to be doing it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And for those who may not be aware of that, what we do is, we meet with the building admin prior to our walkthroughs. We talk about what they, Mr. Powers' question, what keeps you up at night, it always comes up, and what do you feel is working? What are the things that we're going to be looking at in terms of our walkthroughs? And then we actually conduct the walkthroughs collectively as a team, almost like rounds of a medical, rounds of students in a medical program, and then we come back to our meeting space, our original meeting space, and we start to debrief with our administrative team about the good, the bad, what are some of the things that we feel like we need to improve upon, what did, you know, what were some of the real highlights, and, you know, really having real engaging conversation about that. And then Friday, again, Friday morning, we're going to come back and meet again and start talking about district initiatives, and again, most likely focusing on what direction we're going in for our next student success plan that will be going into place in September of '23. So if you have any questions, admin retreat? And just one quick one. I know that we met with long-range planning in regards to my goals for the upcoming school year. My goals will become the administrative team's goals, and we're going to try to all kind of have those collective team goals so that we can push forward, you know, the initiatives within our student success plan in different areas that we feel as though we need to improve upon. One thing we did talk about is, you know, community engagement. So we are going to be exploring, bringing back our pre-COVID coffee chats that we used to have throughout the school year. We used to do them right after arrival, so if parents were dropping off, they wanted to come in, very informal meeting with myself, Mr. Powers, members of our administrative team at the central office, but also the site-based administrators. And so we're looking at if we're going to do those in the morning or a hybrid of morning and night. We even talked a little bit about maybe do we do something prior to school committee meetings as well. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit of an update on that, and that's all I have. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Okay, next on our agenda, we have our budget committee, subcommittee report. Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have seven items before us tonight for action. The budget subcommittee met on July 18th at 4:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were Mrs. Holbrook, Mr. Marrera, and Ms. King and myself. We also had Mr. Swenson, Ms. Macedo, Ms. Robichaud, Mr. Schontz, and Ms. McDougal. The first item that we discussed was the FY22 budget carryovers. Ms. Macedo provided a payroll carryovers and the amounts, and explained that the end-of-year accounting practice, she must receive authorization from the school committee to bring the amounts into the new fiscal budget. The money was accounted for in FY22's budget but was not spent prior to June 30th of 2022. Therefore, the money must be carried over to allow the Director of Business Services, Ms. Macedo, to close out the accounts. So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, I authorize to carry over $55,786.74 into the FY, I'm sorry, into the 2022, 2023 fiscal year for the purposes of payroll, of paying payroll receipts.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, just as a point of reference or order, this money, I know I recuse myself for payroll warrants. My wife is not included in this payroll, so I'm able to vote on this carryover.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just to be clear, Mr. Dolan, this $55,000 is money that needs to be expended probably in July for a payroll that happened prior to July, so we just carried it over a year.
Correct.
So it's not like it's free money that didn't get spent. It's there, it needs to be spent, but this is just a housekeeping item.
Correct, yes, and Ms. Macedo can't move the money without a vote of the committee, so that's, but yes.
I just wanted to make that clear to folks.
It's not new money found.
Right.
It's just moving it from one budget to, one budget year to the next.
Mrs. Macedo, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Those are for the last remaining days in June. We had warrants.
Right.
There were three of them, but there were like four days left that didn't get paid.
I just wanted to make sure folks listening didn't think we just had $55,000 sitting around we didn't know what to do with. We're actually spending it.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
And one abstention? Okay, so motion passes.
Ms. Macedo also brought forward the similar practice as payroll that applies to vendor payment as well. Again, this money, to Mr. Fitzgibbons' earlier point, has been budgeted for in last year's budget, but does not need to be carried over because either the supplies or invoices had not been received by June 30th of 2022. So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, authorize to carry over $3 million... So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, authorize to carry over $3,462,808.64 into the 2022, 2023 fiscal year for the purposes of paying vendor receipts.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Please. All, seven in favor. Motion passes.
You, declaration of surplus as the district continues, as we heard from Mr. Swenson. The moves are starting and happening, hopefully in due fashion tomorrow. We are continuing to purge items that are outdated or broken, and as such, we do have more items for vote tonight for surplus. So in the form of a motion to declare the following items as surplus. 219 VCR tapes from the high school library, as they have outdated and have not been checked out in years. And we don't own any VCRs.
We'll get rid of the Betamax ones, too.
As, as provided in our packet this evening, the elementary library books that were provided, again, in our packets, as they are outdated or damaged. One CRT monitor, 13 Chromebooks, 172 LCD monitors, 121 PCs, two printer scanners, five servers, five network switches, 57 smart boards with projectors. A note about the smart boards and projectors, these smart boards will be offered to both Bridgewater and Rainham, the towns of, if they would like them. If not, they will be offered to other schools and districts before they are recycled.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Martelli. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Go ahead, Mr. Marrera.
No, I just wanted to make a, a comment that I know I brought this up during the budget sub, because when I heard Chromebooks, I said, well, we're getting rid of Chromebooks, but we just got Chromebooks. These Chromebooks are beyond repair. That's why they are being declared as surplus. I just don't want anybody at home to think that we're getting rid of Chromebooks and we're trying to go to one-to-one. So these are beyond repair and no longer being able to be serviced.
End of life. Yep.
Mr. Dolan, I have a question about, I know you said the, the smart boards and the projectors were going to be offered to the towns and then from there potentially offered to other districts. Has there been any consideration of, and I think other municipalities do this, of selling them to community members that would potentially want them?
We.
I mean, we may not be, we may not be allowed to. I just don't know, but, and I know it's, it's administrative work, too.
So what, one thing, so I did reach out to town manager of Bridgewater and the acting town administrator here in Rainham. I have not heard back whether anyone at the town offices or any municipal departments are interested. We do also have a list of local preschools throughout our two communities. I worked with Mrs. George, who is our Director of Transportation, who works with these preschools. And I actually was speaking to Ms. McDougall this morning. I have drafted a letter along with Mr. Schontz, and we're going to be sending those out tomorrow to the preschools throughout the, throughout both the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham. At that point, if we're still, if no one, we have no takers, we work with a company called Upcycle. And what they do is they take all of the technology, integrated technology, they recycle it themselves, refurbish it, and kind of donate it to area schools within the Northeast. So, and actually, I believe throughout the country now, but it started here in the, in the Northeast. So that's kind of what the plan would be. Mrs. Laberinto.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, the second by Mrs. Martelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Seven in favor.
Next up, we had a facilities update. Ms. Macedo gave information for the following that were budgeted for in our budget process. The Merrill Elementary School, the parking lot ceiling and repair, and one hot water heater. Here at RMS, two boilers and the library carpeting, which will be done after extended school year is over. Law Liberty School, one boiler, and the high school, the phone system, and a hot water heater. An item that was not budgeted for was the Law Liberty phone system. There is a problem with that system, causing it to ghost 911 calls to be placed to the Rainham Police Department. As this was not an item that we originally budgeted for and was not part of the Rainham assessment, we are bringing it forward this evening to be, to have it replaced and submitted for reimbursement to the town of Rainham. So, Madam Chair, in the form of a motion, move to replace the phone system at the Law Liberty Elementary School totaling $32,000 and submit for payment to the town of Rainham for reimbursement.
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, who said?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, Kathy. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, a second by Mrs. Martelli. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just a point of information, there was a typo on the agenda. It does say warrant item for RMS. It should have said item, warrant item for Law Liberty's phone system.
That's, the plan is to put that on the fall warrant for Rainham.
Correct.
Anyone else? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, through you to Mr. Dolan. This is, this falls within the parameters of the regional agreement as to which towns pay for what capital, et cetera, in their, in their schools, correct?
Correct. It does.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Martelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Seven in favor. None opposed, no abstention. Motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Macedo also reported a health and bottom, healthy bottom line to the FY22 budget and requested the district-wide facilities projects and two deposits into two stabilization accounts. As a reminder, the district can have a total of 5% of our annual budget set aside into a stabilization account, stabilization funds, I should say. A simply stabilization fund or savings accounts that can be earmarked for specific projects. The project for consideration is to fill, is the filling and topping off of glycol, which works as an antifreeze. And I'll look to Tom to nod his head in agreement with that. Throughout the district, the plan is to fill all buildings, giving the entire district a five years of usage for a total of $250,000. So, Madam Chair, author, through a motion to authorize the refilling of glycol at BMS and RMS and top off of glycol throughout the district not to exceed $250,000.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Seven in favor. None opposed, no abstentions.
We also, as I said, have motioned to approve the deposit of $250,000 into the stabilization fund for technology.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Marrera, Mr. Marrera.
Just, just as, you know, as, as a clarification also, these stabilization funds, just to reiterate, what Mr. Dolan said, these are funds that are established to help us down the line, especially since we're doing a one-to-one from grades five to 12. The stabilization fund for the, for the technology on times where maybe the budget may not allow for us to budget for it, will allow us to tap into these stabilization funds and will help us get a healthy stabilization fund that'll carry us forward each year on the replacement cycles also.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, through you to Mr. Dolan. We're putting the money into the technology stabilization fund. Can a future school committee appropriate it out not to pay for technology?
No.
Or does it have to go to technology as soon as it gets put in there?
It has to go to technology now.
Okay. Or in the future.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, yes, now that it's put there, it has to go to technology whenever it's used. I just wanted to make sure folks were aware of that. Thank you.
As if it's good, we do have, we do have a budgeted general stabilization account as well.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I just wanted to make sure folks understood like why it was being put there, not somewhere else, because we, as Mr. Marrera said, we do need it for technology's purposes specifically.
Ms. Macedo, did you have?
I just wanted to mention that we will need to amend the vendor carryover amount as we're voting these items. So, give me the amount until next, because we had to carry them all.
The money over first. Now she's subtracting.
Great.
No pressure.
Okay.
I will await that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seven in favor. Motion passes. Zero opposed, zero abstentions.
Madam Chair, also in the form of a motion to approve the deposit of $200,000 into the stabilization fund for grounds and maintenance.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Martelli. Discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask, just so the, the viewers watching understand what this stabilization fund is, Mr. Swenson?
Sure.
Would you like to just give a quick brief on the grounds of maintenance?
So this, this would be a stabilization account that could be utilized for projects like the replacement of the multipurpose field at the high school, the track that we're doing, the tennis courts that are coming down the pike. So those, the stabilization account can kind of help offset the cost that we'd go out to the towns for in terms of larger capital items for grounds and maintenance.
And just to follow up, Madam Chair, this is for district-wide items, because it's a district-wide account. So it's really the high school grounds and maintenance, so to speak, for the most part, subject to the regional agreement, because like we just did with Law Liberty, it's a lower-level school that goes to the town.
I, I don't, I don't think this would have to be, we, we could possibly use that for individual town grounds projects, couldn't we not? Sixty, the sixty, forty, so percentage of it. Yeah.
Right. Yeah, that, that's what I meant, relative to the regional agreement.
Right.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Martelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Seven in favor. Zero opposed, zero abstentions.
A couple of more things just to report on. No action needed on these. Tennis courts and track update. Conoco, a Bridgewater-based company, has been selected as the engineer for the project, and the services will cost $56,200. And as we all know, we budgeted for that through the process by taking money out of our EBIT account to cover with this year's budget. The company will create a bid in specifications and take samples, ground samples. The anticipated project's timeline is survey work finished by August 17th, a January groundbreaking and completion by April, May of 2023. The track hopes to become a revenue stream for the district. Once it is done, as it is, will be an eight-lane track, and there are very few eight-lane tracks in the area. Staffing and contract update. Mr. Swenson reported he had numerous independent contracts updated at the end of June. He outlined a formula used in negotiating the independent contracts to bring them more in line with BR, the district's DART districts. The formula was developed to better align principals and assistant principals with similar districts to ensure that we can maintain a strong administrative team. And then finally, well, almost finally, now that there's a change, the FY23 budget. Ms. Macedo distributed the current budget, noting that the new fiscal year has just begun. There's nothing really to report. As sound financial practice as we have done in the past, we will again freeze the budget on October 1st. Madam Chair, I would like to now amend.
I'll make a motion to reconsider item two, B2.
Second.
We have a motion to reconsider year-end vendor carryovers, with the second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you both for that. And I, part of the reconsideration, motion to authorize the carryover of $3,962,448.64 into the 2022, 2023 fiscal year for the purposes of paying vendor receipts.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Seven in favor. Zero opposed, zero abstentions.
That concludes my budget report.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Next on our agenda, get to it. We have Transportation Subcommittee Report. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Thank you. Well, it's summertime, so we're looking at buses and bus routes and schedules, et cetera, et cetera. And the Transportation Subcommittee is there to help every parent who's worried about that. Don't know how much we can help, unfortunately, though. We had a meeting last week or the week before to review our guidelines around how do the buses work. And really, we get reimbursed by the state, allegedly 100%, but as we all know, that's subject to appropriation, so we only get less than that. And anything within a mile and a half, we don't get reimbursed for anyone being transported on the buses. So we reaffirm that policy, and I believe I have something to sign for Mrs. McDougall about that at some point. And, you know, we're, I, I guess I can say to parents out there, we're here to listen, but if you're 1.49 miles away and we say yes, you can ride on a bus, then the next parent who's 1.48 miles away is going to ask, can I ride on a bus? Just not to mix, mix reports here, community liaison, but there was some feedback to me during my office hours around, could we bring pay to ride back? I don't want to talk about it right now, but if we could just discuss it, so a future meeting, why that doesn't quite work for us, that would be great, because although we, we've lived it for a long time, folks are coming in as new parents in kindergarten, first grades, et cetera, who just need to hear that information. Anyone else who was on the committee? Did I miss anything? No? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Next on our agenda, we have a Policy Subcommittee Report. Mrs. King.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, July 18th, 2022, the Policy Subcommittee met. In attendance were Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Swenson, Mrs. Macedo, and our Recording Secretary, Mrs. McDougall, as well as myself. The Policy Subcommittee reviewed the following policies at that time. Policy DJB procurement process. This policy was brought to us by Mrs. Macedo for minor housekeeping edits based upon recommendations by the Department of Revenue to add the federal law citation and a link to the federal guidelines and procedures manual. Accordingly, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the housekeeping edits to Policy DJB procurement process.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Seven in favor.
The second policy was Policy BDE, the subcommittees of the school committee. This policy also had minor housekeeping edits to revise it to state at least one member in two places in the policy to align with our current practice. Specifically, the Regional Agreement Subcommittee consists of only two members total. consists of only two members total, one from each town. Also, the first sentence was revised by one of the members, since it was a little duplicative, to state the school committee chair shall appoint a subcommittee chair and members to subcommittees at their annual reorganization meeting for a period of one year. And then paragraph two of that original policy was removed, so it was not duplicative. Accordingly, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve housekeeping edits to Policy BDE, subcommittees of the school committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could, as Chair of the Regional Agreement Subcommittee, I just want to point out that we have representation from district leadership as well as our member towns. We have a member of the selectmen from Rainham, along with their town man, their town administrator. And then from Bridgewater, we have a councilman, and the Bridgewater Town Manager also serve on those committees as it is the regional agreement that they are assigning.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera. Any questions? I mean, Mr. Dolan, whoever you are down there. Okay.
It could be worse.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Seven favors, zero opposed, and zero abstentions.
Thank you. The third policy that we reviewed was Policy GCF, professional staff hiring. This policy was going back to our policy manual to just review all of our policies going in order. So this was the last one that we had looked at. The next meeting in August, we'll go back to this next one and go from there. This policy was reviewed by the Subcommittee and had no needed revisions other than we will add buy and approve dates at the bottom of the policy for tracking purposes going forward when we review these again. Accordingly, Madam Chair, we'd like to make a motion to approve housekeeping edits to Policy GCF, professional staff hiring.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Marrera. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same. Abstentions? Motion passes. Seven in favor.
Lastly, we did discuss Policy EEA, transportation for students, as Mr. Fitzgibbons discussed. This policy was just looked at and discussed because there was a following Subcommittee meeting of the Transportation Subcommittee, as we did have numerous transportation appeals filed that will be coming up, but we took no action on it at that time. Finally, our next Policy Subcommittee meeting was scheduled for Monday, August 8th, I believe, following Long Range, but I did not have a time. Did we set a time, Mrs. McDougal? Okay. I'll follow up with you, but it will be August 8th, following Long Range, I believe. And this concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Next on our agenda, we have Long Range Planning Subcommittee Report. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Long Range Planning Committee met on August 8th, and then present was Ms. Martelli, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. King, Mr. S- huh?
Not August.
Oh, sorry, July. Sorry, I'm thinking about the next one. Sorry, last week. Mr. Swenson and Mrs. Keown. We did review the student exit surveys. There were exit surveys sent out for school year 2021 and 2122. To date, I may think there's approximately around 110 surveys that have come back between the two years. Due to kind of the timing of the surveys going out, it was, the survey was sent out kind of one shot, one time. Moving forward, starting at the beginning of the school year in September, those surveys will be sent out during the month, during the month that the student, the family exit the district. We are, the, the information from those surveys year, kind of comparing the two years, if you will, will be presented at the October School Committee meeting, the results from those surveys. And then going forward, that information would be presented in October. Any questions about the surveys before we move forward? The other item was on, that we discussed was the superintendent evaluation process and type, the process. We did discuss the superintendent's goals at the meeting last week with the superintendent. We will be meeting again on August 8th to further that discussion around the goals. The hope is to finish that discussion on August 8th to, at the Subcommittee, to approve those goals, and then present the Subcommittee's findings or those goals at the August School Committee meeting for approval, that those goals would be in place for this coming school year, from August or September through June.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto. Anyone have any questions? All right. So thank you for your updates, and we do look forward to your report next month when the superintendent's goals are presented. Next on our agenda, we have Community Liaisons, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto and Mr. Fitzgibbons. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto?
So I will start with, I did not have one this past week, this past month. Mr. Fitzgibbons did. At one point, we had, I will just say, at one point, we had discussed whether kind of school committee office hours, you know, what that should look like, and then whether it should go to Long Range planning or whether it should be discussed here. I would recommend that as, as a school committee, we have that discussion here and not in Long Range planning about if there's something we want to do collectively around Long Range planning, and I would recommend that we, you know, do that in the next meeting.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Oh, I have, I have a few things. I want to thank everyone for coming out to my office hour yesterday, which extended to about an hour and a half because we had a lot to talk about. One of, one of the big items was, as you can imagine during the summers, and as I reported on the Transportation Committee, the one and a half-mile bus stop, et cetera. And also, another thing we should all, we should be cognizant of, and I hope the administration is as well, is what we're asking those youngest students, if we're asking them to walk from home, what type of sidewalk or non-sidewalk on what type of road is being asked of them to do so that we're sensitive to those things. That was very important to several people. Just a quick question through you, Madam Chair, to the superintendent, if he has it yet. Do we have arrival and dismissal times yet for the buildings, or are we still working on those?
No, we have those.
We have those?
Same, same.
Same as, same as always. Okay, thank you. There was some confusion, so I figured we'd just clear it up right here. Thank you. Do, do, um, let's see, what else came in? There was some concern about the school committee's decision around the letter to the Bridgewater Town Clerk that you had read into the record earlier, where folks disagreed with the conclusion. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of this, of the school committee. Question on security. That continues to be a big issue, making sure that we're doing everything possible and appropriate to, to make sure security works. And are we still conducting Alice training? Do we, do we do that, an annual type of a training? So that's ongoing. Folks wanted to understand that. There was some discussion around drug policy, as you indicated it, I believe, Madam Chair, in your report on emails. It was brought up to me around marijuana and, and possibly putting out a policy statement, much like we did with the fair share amendment around marijuana. And so, you know, some folks would like to see that. Activity fee. This was just kind of a generalized concern, and maybe this goes through the superintendent to Mrs. Macedo or somebody else. How, how did we do collecting activity fees throughout the district? And were all of them collected that needed to be? Obviously, we're not going to put anyone in financial hardship on this, but just making sure that that's all audited, everything's ticked off and checked. So if we could hear a report back on that at some point in time, that would be great. Continued, continued concern about coming forward with issues, as I'm bringing them forward to the committee. I'm not mentioning anyone's name. Several people were like, please don't mention I was there because I don't want my child retaliated against. I know this is not a practice of the district. However, it is a perception we need to start to address. So I'm just bringing that up because it's important. We addressed that. Do, do, um, some question around making sure all of our, all of our books are age-appropriate and making sure that, you know, it aligns with community standards, et cetera. So I'm sure the curriculum leaders are taking care of that, as I'm sure the superintendent would tell us. But that was a concern that was brought up. Then there was some concern or some questions around with the new Mitchell opening up and having some STEM spaces outside of the classroom. Would there be coordinators to help facilitate lessons there? Or is it going to be on each individual classroom teacher to do so? And then there was some worry about the equality of spaces between what, you know, elementary students in Bridgewater are going to be getting with the new Mitchell versus what they're getting in Rainham, and is that fair? They, there was a general consensus that, you know, when I, when I come up and make these reports and, you know, you hear things, you, you report, Madam Chair, on, on the community emails, that if we could, if we could generate a feedback mechanism as a committee to let folks know these were heard, as you say, if you want something, email, you know, the committee or email yourself. But if it could be more broad-ranging, whether it be a discussion here or something we put out as a publication, et cetera, there was just some concern about that. And I did want to mention, this isn't really, it's kind of his community liaisons. Senator Walter Timmeltie, who's going to be representing, well, his office will be representing Bridgewater in the State Senate coming up. He's up for election this fall, and he has a primary opponent, and then, you know, he'll have to get through the general election. But whoever wins, Senator Timmeltie is in the office that will represent Bridgewater. He came down to Bridgewater for the 30th anniversary of the Senior Center and came down to walk around the town center with the town manager. And I managed to wrangle an invitation out of the town manager so that I could remind Senator Timmeltie that Bridgewater people really care about Bridgewater-Rainham School District a lot, and he'd love to come down and meet the superintendent at some point in time. So I just wanted to let Mr. Swenson know that, and, you know, if you'd like me to facilitate it, I do have his staff's numbers so that I can, I can make that work. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any questions from committee members? Yes.
Madam Chair, to Mr. Fitzgibbons' point about user fees and audits, every year, the district conducts, it's an external audit of our budget, and all of our budget lines are audited, and we get a, a report at the end of that, typically in October, November. I'll look to Ms. Macedo to know when we get the report.
So that's. I appreciate the, appreciate the info.
So that is done. Again, that's an outside agency that is.
And then we can share that out with folks as well and.
Absolutely.
Let them know.
Yep, and we definitely do.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. We do appreciate you holding those office hours as well. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Personnel Report. Mr. Powers.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Swenson, members of the School Committee. I know you have a copy of the Personnel Report for this past month. As you can see, it is quite lengthy. So just in fairness to you and your time and everyone here and watching, I'm just going to give you a general overview. As you can see, there are 79 personnel actions taken during the month of July or during this last month. Two important ones I do want to note and recognize, we did have two retirements. John Smith, who is our senior custodian, retired after 34 years of service to the district. That will be effective August 22nd. And Ellen Gaspardi is retiring as a teacher from the Williams, currently in art, after 25 years, and that was effective at the end of June. In addition, we had 36 new hires take place over the month of this past month. We did have eight resignations, and we had 32 other personnel actions. That included voluntary transfers, voluntary reassignments, temporary positions to permanent positions, or other one-year appointments. And that concludes my Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. That was, I liked the way you just broke that down for us. That was wonderful.
For next month, it will be just as lengthy, and I will try to condense it as much as possible.
Yes.
Mr. Powers, at this point, do you have any idea approximately how many open positions we still have come, you know, before, again, that we need to fill before September?
In terms of teaching positions, if we have any, they're, they're few. I don't have an exact number. I know, obviously, the reason why we don't have more is they're still processing these. So, you know, many of the positions that may appear to be open are actually already filled, but they just may not be reflected in this report. But we do, you know, still have some open positions. Obviously, you know, you hear we have eight resignations. I know one just came in, is moving, you know, across the state. So those last-minute ones are somewhat unexpected. We'll, we'll have to fill. But otherwise, you know, others were anticipated.
And our ESP positions, are we just kind of, that's an open door and?
No, we actually, Mr. Jovolosin has really kind of taken the lead on hiring all the ESPs. And I know that's an ongoing process, but really, he worked with Ms. Richards early on in the summer and getting our kindergarten ESPs on board, and, you know, our special education ESPs as well. He continues to, if we have any open, continues to advocate and interview.
I do have one question. I know there was a big push this year to do the additional hires and the ASPs for all the K classrooms. Do we know if we have met our goal of a hire for every kindergarten classroom? Or do we still have some pending?
Sure, Mr. Jovolosin, if you want to.
That's amazing. That's very awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Tip of the hat to Mr. Jovolosin. He's done an outstanding job of that. And Ms. Richards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Ms. Jovolosin.
Okay, next on our agenda is new business, and the first item is an action item, approval of payroll warrants dated June 16th, 2022, June 23rd, 2022, June 30th, 2022, and July 14th, 2022.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons and second by Mr. Marrera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We have two abstentions. So we have five in favor and two abstentions. Next on the agenda is action item, also an action item, and that would be the student handbooks. And that's Mr. Powers and Mr. Ringette.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Mr. Swenson, members of the School Committee, Mr. Ringette and I are here to just provide a quick update and overview if needed. I know you have copies of changes to the, proposed changes to the high school handbook, as well as links to all of the handbooks. I can, you know, speak for Mr. Ringette, but certainly he can ask for, he can answer any specific questions. Obviously, every year, regardless whether it's the high school, middle school, or elementary school, we do review our handbooks just to make sure that we're not missing anything, that all of our policies and practices and protocols are up to date. And obviously, if we've missed anything dramatic... protocols are up to date. And obviously, if we've missed anything dramatically or structurally, you know, if we need to renumber any type of items. So I know for the elementary and middle school, there were no significant changes. We did make several small changes. You know, for example, we did update all of our start and end times in our handbooks. Preschool is obviously going to be updated. The Williams School will be updated. Just a one point of clarification, something as simple as phone numbers, we're still waiting to decide what's going to happen with Bridgewater Middle and the new Mitchell as far as their phone numbers. So you may, you'll see that in the packet as highlighted because that's just a placeholder. We know we need to update those before that goes out. Other small changes, just so you have an example, you know, in the middle school handbook, it referenced the junior honor society where it really should have read national junior honor society. So those updates were made. So nothing that changed really any type of significant practice. And I know, obviously, at the high school level, Mr. Ringette and his team, Ms. Watson as well, and the staff, they provide feedback on the handbooks and then they make changes as necessary, given anything that may have taken place over the course of the year, or again, just making sure that they've caught any edits that need to take place or revising any past practices that need to be updated. So you do have a copy of those at the high school level. Happy to answer any questions or provide any further explanation.
Mrs. Holber?
Yes.
I have a lot of questions, sorry. My, my question is on the handbooks. Did Kayla, the DI coordinator, which, did she review the handbooks from a diversity equity standpoint?
So our handbooks are, we're reviewing them on an ongoing basis. So we actually started last year, forming a committee, actually, I believe before Ms. Berrios came on. So that is something that we know that we, we need to do as well. You know, our health services reviewed it, reverted from a special education lens, all the administrative team. But again, it was, you know, prior to Ms. Berrios' arrival. So that's something that, you know, as we start to look at our handbooks going forward this year, for next year's presentation, we will certainly make sure Ms. Berrios is involved in that process.
I have a lot of questions. I will start with the younger, the elementary, or the, from looking at what was in our file, there's the highlighted piece. I'm assuming most of that was the high school or all of that was the high school?
Yep, the highlighted piece is the high school.
So there's some things in the high school that it reads, like one part in there is around suspension, and there's some new policies around short-term, long-term suspension. And there was one thing in that read in there around suspension of K or pre-K through third that need to go up to superintendents, but it was on that piece. I'm assuming that's more applicable to the young-
That discipline language is very similar throughout?
It's copy and paste in all of them, I'm assuming.
We get that from our legal counsel.
Correct. So my question around that is particular suspension of pre-K through third or fourth grade. I know a lot of districts, Boston and nationally, have moved to a zero suspension policy for pre-K through third or fourth grade. And I'm just curious why we have not done that. Because for me, suspending a young child is detrimental, and it's really about a lack of support versus, you know, an eight-year-old, something that happens. And have we considered to move, move to a zero suspension policy for younger kids?
We haven't, really, for the, the main reason that we actually suspend very few-
Right, I'm assuming we do, yes.
And really, it's usually as a last resort-
Right.
-after several supports have been put in place and obviously exhausted all of those supports. You know, it may result in a suspension, whether it be in school or out of school. So at this time, we have not considered removing that because we have not felt as though that there's a overuse of suspension at that level.
I don't disagree. Even if it's one or two kids, I would encourage us to really look at that. I know for Boston, fourth and fifth graders, they allow for suspension, but only if there's kind of immediate threat or weapons kind of piece. But pre-K through third, there is a zero suspension policy.
Madam Chair, if I may, I actually would disagree with Mrs. Conrad-Labarinto. And I don't like the idea of taking any option away from the administration team, the administrative team. Do I agree with suspending a pre-K to third grade? No. But giving, taking that option away from an administrator, I'm not okay with. I think it needs to stay as a, as part of the process. We, we talk about a process of, I'll look to you to help you with the language-
Progressive?
Progressive discipline. At some point, that progressive discipline may have to be suspension. And if we have a zero tolerance for it at that grade level, then what are we to do, or I should say, what are the, is the administrative team to do then? So as much as I agree with the thought of, we shouldn't be doing it for pre-K to three, I don't think we should be tying the hand of the administrative team to, to keep that as one of their options.
I would just say nationally, there's a lot of research around the more you suspend kids, the more it causes a pipeline to prison, and the more detrimental it is to them. And there's been a lot of research around this, especially about younger kids. So I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Dolan, but again, we don't suspend kids typically, it sounds like. So.
I, I'd just suggest, if I may, I'm sorry, that if we're suspending kids pre-K to three, that's not the kid's fault. It's, it's probably the family's fault. But it's also the, the education, education system's fault. And so we have to look at ourselves when we get to that point and say, what could we do better? You know, what could we do better? But I, I agree with Mr. Dolan to the extent, you, you don't want to take something away as a potential tool to use, I guess is the worst way to say it.
I, I guess for, for me, I would like to refer this to the policy committee to take this up around our policy around suspension of younger kids. I'm assuming it's a policy issue, or if it's not, if it's a handbook issue. If it's a handbook issue and not a policy issue, let me know. I will, I will-
With all due respect, Madam Chair, I don't think it's a policy issue. It's more of a procedural issue.
Well, if that's the case, then I would like to make a motion that we have a zero suspension policy for pre-K through third grade.
We have a motion by Mrs.-
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Wait, can it be on the, it's not on the agenda, but it's part of-
It's part of the handbook.
Handbook. Okay, okay. All right, so we have a motion to, I'm sorry, Mrs. Conrad-Labarinto-
To have a zero suspension policy for pre-K through third grade.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Okay, and a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion does not pass. One in favor and six opposed.
I still have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know in the high school, there's new language around electronic devices, which I support, was a huge issue last year. My question is around that, there's no mention of, you know, we do have kids that need a medical device for, need a device for medical reasons, and there's no mention of that. And that ability, is that going to be added?
So any student that needs a medical device typically, or needs a device for medical reasons is typically written into 504, and 504s will, will trump this.
Okay, I didn't know that every kid would have a 504 if they, I mean, does every, I mean, does every, I don't know if every kid that, typically, again, a kid with diabetes that has, you know, a device for it, are all those kids on 504s or not? I just didn't know. Mr. I got shaken, I said, okay. And then my other, some other piece I have is, I'm assuming all the new language around suspension, not new, around the disability suspension piece is in line with the U.S. Department of Education guidance that was sent out just a week or so ago? Is that correct?
Yeah, all of our, again, we refer all of our discipline language to our legal counsel. So she provides any type of feedback based on, you know, any information that is-
So that, that was updated in the last week and a half, that's what I'm asking? Because that was sent out the July 19th?
I believe we got the legal language about, I want to say about a month and a half.
Okay, so it was-
We're meeting with our legal team again during our end retreats, so we can make sure that we're all right with how these are done.
Right, okay, okay. And then my other, my other thing is, there's a lot of language in there around alcohol, suspension around alcohol. And I will just say, is that, the suspension and the discipline around alcohol is not the same as is for vapes and that kind of thing? It is different. They're not parallel. But, and also in the high school handbook, it talks about vapes and tobacco. There is no mention anywhere of marijuana.
Yeah. So bringing, although marijuana is legalized, it's still illegal to bring to schools?
Correct.
So it falls under a different statute in the law. So that is, if you bring drugs into school, you now fall under a certain different statute than if you were to bring, say, alcohol or nicotine or the such?
Is there a reason that alcohol and the nicotine one isn't in line with each other? That they're not the same? So like the nicotine one is like you get a one, first offense is a one day in school or something. And for alcohol, it is first, first offense is an eight-day suspension? They're not in line? Is there a reason they're not in line?
Again, this is, the, the team reviews those, and this is what they've determined to be best.
Okay. And I'll just say on the high school, the numbering's off. I don't know if you noticed that? The numbering's off a little bit. I can't remember what pages it is. It's around the long-term suspension piece. It starts out one, two, and then goes to up to five, and then starts over at two again. The number's just off. The numbering is off. And then there's dates around PSAT, PSAT testing, and that's 2021.
Okay, so those get adjusted every year?
Okay, yeah, the other ones are all adjusted, but that was the only one that, um, what-
Those get adjusted every year.
Yeah, that one was just the one that was off. And then I would just say around the long-range suspension, number two, it talked about the student having access to their file before a hearing or meeting with the principal. Is there a reason why that is not the student and the caregiver has access to that file, that record? It only mentions the student having access to that record.
I think it would depend on the age of the student. Obviously, if we're talking about an older student, we typically deal with the student if they're over 18.
Right.
Obviously, younger parental rights always trump that, and they always have access to the file.
It just says, it only says the student has access to the record for the file or the whatever is under long, the long-term suspension. It doesn't mention anything about the parent having access to that. So.
Do the parents have access to the file under FERPA?
They can request access to their child's record anytime, a parent can.
Under FERPA?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you can have access to your child's record with due notice.
Madam Chair, if I could, there, the school committee does not have a policy on suspension. So suspension is, by, by being silent, our policy manual, in our policy manual, we leave suspension up to discretion of the administration, at either the school level or the district level.
The only, my last question, under, I think it's page 31 in the high school, it talks about sports fees, and it listed as $50. And it says it's, is that separate than the registration, or is the sport registration different than the sports fee? It starts about club or activity fees in the sports fee at $50.
There is a club activity fee at $50, and a sports activity fee is-
$250 or whatever, $300. So it, it says they're the same. It says sports slash activity is $50, and so that's where it was just confusing to me.
There are some club sports, so I wonder if that's-
Yeah, it didn't say anything in the handbook about the, I know the sports fee is whatever, the $250, $300, and it doesn't talk about that. And it, because, yeah, I just didn't know.
I'm just, you said it referenced sports slash clubs. Like I said, I think that there are some sports that are clubs, such as ultimate frisbee.
Right, right.
So that may be-
That versus the sports fee. So that's where I just didn't, it was, I, whatever, some change in that language or updating. I had some more questions. Thank you, sorry.
Okay. And Mr. Ringette, I just have one question on a couple of edits maybe. On page three, the electronic devices in school at the top, students may use their electronic, electronics between classes during study halls and during lunch. The library guidance office and nurse's office are device-free areas. If they are listening to music in these same areas, they must have one ear unobstructed at all times for safety reasons. Does that go, should that be after the, between classes and during study halls and during lunch?
Yes.
And not after, because you're saying it cannot be, I'm assuming, in the library guidance office and nurse's office?
Right.
And wouldn't you need that device? So if we just move that sentence up between those two, so it's, third sentence moved to the second sentence. Okay, that would be great. The other thing was on page seven, number six, the second, second sentence, the principal shall notice the student. Should that be notified?
Not by the nurse.
Okay. And then Roman, Roman numeral four, it's under number six also. The notice the student's opportunity, should it just be the student's opportunity to receive and take out notice the? Okay. That was it that I saw. Thank you. Okay, so-
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs.?
I just had a question for Mr. Powers. This is a budgetary thing that might potentially we can talk about in the future. But when budget had talked about the holder for the cell phones at the high school level, I think that was maybe 2018 or something, pre-COVID. So we had started doing that because cellphone use was so pervasive and it was distracting, and the teachers didn't want to be monitoring that during classroom time. Now in 2022, that is a huge issue at the middle school level as well. Having a middle schooler, I never let her bring her device to school until this past year, and then it was locked during the day. But 99% of the kids have them at this level. So that might be something that we think about putting into at the next year, into that middle school handbook and talking at budget.
Absolutely. Mr. Caleb and Mrs. Charette have already had those conversations. And I know they spoke to Ms. Watson as, as well about that, trying to align in the future their practices with what the high school's doing, whether it's in a holder or just really strictly enforcing that, you know, out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah. Because, I mean, I know from my own personal, I know some teachers enforce that, some didn't. Some felt it was, you know, I'm trying to do my lesson and I can't monitor this as well. So I know at the high school level, it was helpful because that took that out of the teacher's hands. You know, that was a policy, so it wasn't, I'm telling you this, but we don't have a policy that says that.
Great point. Thank you.
Okay. And I will say, I will say the cellphone piece, I already heard about it last April, because I think the high school, Ms. Watson has already prepped kids that this is going to happen, or it's going to be changing, because this past year, it was kind of a free-for-all. I shouldn't say free-for-all, but a lot of kids on phones all the time. So yes, I'm assuming kids are already kind of aware this is coming and having to deal with it.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept updates and edits to the 2022, 2023 student handbooks.
So moved.
Have a motion by-
Second.
-Mr. Marrera, second by Mr. Dolan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, we've come to the public comment section of our agenda, and the chair will, the school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and ensure compliance with open meeting law and any, and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will now not engage with a speaker or with one another in deliberations on comments as they are presented during comment period. At the discretion of, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. The chair will now open the public comment period for 12 minutes per policy B E D. The chair will now open the public comment period for 12 minutes per policy BEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your naveling address, and respectfully ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment at 9:55. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is announcements, and does anyone from the committee have any announcements?
Madam Chair, I do have one. I did see on social media about school organized sports. Just so a lot of parents or incoming freshman parents are aware, under MIA rules, coaches are not allowed to organize practices yet. So the teams do most likely by this point have captains assigned, and captains are running captains' practices. So I would ask any parents that have any high school students coming in that they're interested in sports, to talk to their friends in those sports, or talk to any other friends that are upperclassmen in those sports. Find out who the captains are, because the captains are organizing captains' practices already at their discretion. Again, the coaches cannot organize technically by MIA rules, and if they don't know who those captains are, I would ask those parents to reach out to the school athletic director. He can kind of probably get them in touch with who the coach is, and the coach can let them know who those captains are at this point and kind of connect the dots.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera. Anyone else?
Just a couple, just a couple notes. As far as Mr. Fitzgibbons, his meetings, the mile and a half, state regs, you know, nobody expects your child to walk a mile and a half. That's, it's just the state regs. Mr. Jovalos and Ms. Maderas, thank you for your summer programs and the work you're doing. It's awesome. And I know Mr. Kilgore is gone, but immense work that the custodians are doing this summer, and I just commend them for, they're above and beyond what they're doing. So, just that.
Student helpers.
And the student helpers. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Martelli.
That's it.
Anyone else? Okay, we do have, the school committee recognizes the importance of professional growth and development, and they agree to participate in experiences designed to further their knowledge and advance the work of public schools. So in the spirit of professional development, the school committee will be attending a workshop on evaluating the superintendent on August 1st, which will be presented by Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Our next regular school committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the lecture hall of the high school. This concludes our regular school committee meeting. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?